We're gonna get this meeting started. It's our October eleventh, twenty twenty-three workshop. But first and foremost, I'd like to light a candle. If I could. Just one, just one.
There'd be more candles than cake if you put them all on there.
As crazy as it sounds, Rob and I did graduate high school together. But when I was in eighth grade, he was driving us to school.
First time I heard that joke, I fell off a dinosaur.
All right, uh, first up, we're gonna do the, uh, oath of office for several of our police officers. Uh, Chief, wanna come on down? Do you want me down here also?
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce you to three of our newer officers. Danny Hartman is Julian Bolling. And Officer Boy was born in Delaware. He served many years in the United States Army and had other guys before coming to us. He graduated from Baltimore County's Police Academy in, uh, July, early July. And he has since completed his required training with a seasoned officer. Um, and so now he's working on the patrol squad for us. So really happy to have Julian with us. Um, he currently lives in Wilmington. Next to him, we have TJ Wilma, Officer Wilma, uh, who was born in Delaware, but raised here in Elton, where he continues to reside with his wife and kids. Graduated from Elton High School also. And, um, and Y T R career instantly. He did serve briefly in the United States Navy. Um, and he just graduated from Baltimore City Police Academy last Friday. Uh, while in the academy, Officer Wilma was, uh, the class commander for the entire length of the academy class, which is not the more. Um, he earned the top shot award and he earned the top driving award. Next to him, you will see Officer Charles Lane, and they call him Nick. Um, Officer Lane was born in Jersey, raised in Delaware and currently lives in Elton with his wife. He graduated from Bell Tech, um, with an associate's degree in general business. I believe he might be even more for, uh, our Patriots one for a while. Right? Um, he just graduated from Baltimore City Police Academy on Friday as well. And while in the academy, he was class valid at Florida. And he achieved a top physical fitness award for his class. So for the two that were in Baltimore, um, city's class, they received all of the awards except for the, um, Baltimore City Chiefs Award. We can't really expect them to go to an Elton officer, but that's ahead. So if you would just join me in welcoming all three of you.
Very good. I'll get you guys to come over on this side so everyone can see you. And, uh, if I can get you, uh, when I said say they made each other, each other's second. Your hand, please. Aye.
Julian Bolling.
Timothy Wilma.
Charles Lane.
Do swear and promise.
Do swear and promise.
To support the Constitution.
Stand up for the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance to the state of America.
To the state of America.
And support the Constitution and laws.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will.
For the best of my steel endowment.
To the best of my steel endowment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Consta- State Constitution.
According to the Constitution, the laws of the state.
The laws of the state.
Welcome aboard.
Lords, I'd like to pitch up a quick.
Thank you for joining the team.
Yes, sir. I'd rather.
Right, please.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Take these in my hand.
Right.
Congratulations. Well, thank you, Steve. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. We're proud of you.
Coming through.
So we're also having on the sign, uh, a police officer's sanctity of life pledge, which says that the undersigned certified police officer, in accordance with their assigned duties, my oath as a police officer and Maryland State Public Safety Article Section three five two four C, do hereby recognize that all life is precious and valuable and pledge that I will do my job ethically to protect all persons.
Is that new, Carolyn?
That is a new requirement based on the police reform. I believe it went into effect in twenty twenty-one.
Cause all our police officers.
With the of all signs.
Value the sanctity of life.
Absolutely.
All right, team, get up here and smile. Smile big. Okay, uh, we gotta move over there or something. Get it in there. Locked it so much. There we go. Lions thrive, thrive. Got you, Rob. Thank you. Thank you, God.
Before they depart, uh, congratulate all three of the gentlemen who just became officers. Like special thanks to TJ, he's at Elton High School. When I was there and I was admitted, he is a resident here in the town of Elton. Actually, I've watched him grow and he's here with his uncles and their, and their, his other relatives. Might as well, I know most of you probably are, but again, congratulations, TJ.
Listen, just don't take after this uncle over here.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
We're doing well. As we, uh, we worked together, uh, for a period of time.
They saw it all together.
Yes, we did. Yeah, yeah, we were welders together. Back in our welding days. Thank you guys tonight. Okay, uh, up next on the agenda, discussion with Mr. Ray Jackson, Stan Wall Capital. Uh, Mr. Jackson, you're gonna give us a, uh, uh, a rundown of, uh, where we're at with South Fields.
Yes, sir. Fire link up there hopefully and right away. Yes, I think, um.
So I'm doing share screen.
You're enabling that.
I did.
From the shield.
Try again, sir.
You don't want to share a screen, so we'll get this figured out.
We could always sing happy birthday to, um, Professor Rob.
One more time.
I swiped it from the back.
Shield.
From the shield.
All right, thank you, sir.
So let's change. I got a shield on my head. I just remembered.
No, that's fine.
Thank you so. I don't need to do anything else.
Hey, here we go. So thank you all very much for allowing us to come in, uh, this afternoon and just update you. I mentioned previously, we can try to do more, uh, more frequently as we're getting ready to start breaking ground on what I call the second, what we call the second phase. So, uh, very quickly, you, you probably are aware, the first building was built in the first phase, the logistics center. Um, there will be an update here very shortly. Um, uh, both the mayor and the county executive have been, have been working with, uh, the leasing agent, uh, to bring up, uh, a, a company here to, to Elton. Um, that I think everybody will be very excited about when they do announce that they're ready to finish lines of one yard line. Not ready to announce that yet. Hopefully in the next month when we come back and update, you will be able to make that announcement. So that's important. So the belief is there's two tenants. Um, I'm not, I, 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 I would rather have McLean. Understand. From C D Richard Ellis and, and describe, uh, uh, they, the tenants and what their intent is, the uses of the building, so on and so forth. But, um, right now they're talking to a number of different tenants. That's the answer to the question. But they're at the finish line with one of those tenants. Um, so they do have the ability to, to proceed on buildings two and three once they get that, those permitted. And I think the first step is to get the first building, uh, a tenant released. So, um, I can say with some, some level of confidence that the next time we come in here next month, we'll be able to announce, uh, the, the user. So again, it's a very positive thing and that, that leads to the job creation. So when we first came in here, talked about the, uh, the project, what we said is we would, we would build the logistics first. I would create, you know, jobs and create need for additional housing and need for retail and commercial. So we, we were, we're accomplishing the first phase. The second phase, we're hopeful will be breaking ground in the next month or two. And that's kind of what I want to talk about today. So, um, here's, here's the status of everything to date. Um, and really what we're talking about is the, the residential portion of Southfield, which is the yellow highlighted, uh, highlighted, uh, areas. Mike Brown and sideline sports, sports complex, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. And then the, the retail and the commercial. So, uh, we're really talking about everything on the left side of two thirteen right now. That's what we're talking about. So the on-site approvals for the infrastructure, which is what I've been talking about. Uh, that's the boulevard, the water and the sewer and the water tower and the pump stations and all that. We're ninety percent complete. We have a number of those permits in hand. Um, the town has been, they've been very diligent, especially in the last couple of weeks of helping us to get to the finish line. So I'm appreciative of that. Been a little bit of struggle before that. I think everybody knows about that. We don't need to, we don't need to go through all that. So we're, we're right at the, the one yard line again on the, on the final site plan or, or approvals for, uh, the construction permits. The off-site approvals include, um, uh, improvements to different intersections. It includes, uh, XL and D cell lanes. It includes potential traffic signals. So those plans are, are done with not just the town, but also with the county and state highway. So they're about, uh, seventy-five percent approved as well. Okay? That, that's, that's the, the approval of traffic as well as the plans committed to traffic, as I just described. The public works agreement, again, as I mentioned previously, the town's been great. We're right at the finish line with that. Thank you, Willis, and your team for getting that, um, that finalized. The special tax district, which we've talked about numerous times, we're ninety-five percent complete on that. Uh, there's some, some final things that need to get buttoned up and we're right at the finish line there too. That is our funding mechanism for the majority of the infrastructure. The water tower construction, we'll show you a picture of that in a second. That's eighty-five percent complete. So it's fully erected. It's, it's gonna be sanded and painted here shortly. Um, so you can physically see, start to see some of the improvements that we're making. Wellhouse construction, as you well know, is, is, is complete, ready for testing. Uh, fresh town work, which is parcel A, the, the, the browned, the, um, the waters, the, the river. Um, we're still in very preliminary planning there and we need to initiate a little bit more work on that side. So all of us need to talk about that, but that's where we are. So, so that, the part, we did get a, a, a state grant to do the, uh, the study back there. There's been some preliminary work done, but we've gotta get a little bit better organized. I'll say that as a group. Okay? So that's the status of everything. Um, these are the financial contributions. I think it's important for everybody to be aware of what we have done as private citizens in this development. So, so, so far we, we paid for the water tower. The water tower is, uh, uh, north of three and a half million dollars. Um, the, the water tower was originally planned for around four hundred thousand gallons. I might be off, but the, the requirement for the Southfields fully built was about four hundred thousand gallons. We agreed to increase the capacity of the water tower to help the town's future growth. So that's why we ended up, uh, landing on the six hundred thousand gallon water tower. We deed it, as you well know, the, the property for the wellhouse and the well over to the town, uh, of Elton. Um, the allocation of the water, I'm not sure anybody's ever really thought about monetizing that. And, and, you know, if you, if you do the math, that's, that's got a capacity of a half a million gallons of debt that's permitted. Um, and the value we're here in the Elton area is about five cents a gallon. Um, and again, we did that well over two. Um, the white, there's a, there's gonna be a sewer upgrade on Whitehall Road. There's a portion of the Whitehall Road sewer that we're actually going to, um, to replace. And the cost of that's about six hundred fifty thousand dollars. The off-site improvements, which I mentioned previously, that's, is an example, is the, the, the intersection of Route forty and, and two thirteen. There's gonna be significant improvements that need to be made there. There's gonna be some changes in the, in the, the lanes, actually. There's gonna be striping and paving and there's, there's gonna be a, a portion of the property that's paved. Uh, there'll be changes in the signaling. There'll be changes in the, in the striping, as I mentioned. Um, and I, 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 I can't tell you how many intersections, you know, we're all talking about. It's two thirteen and forty. There's Whitehall Road forty. There's Whitehall Road in two thirteen. And then the entire stretch along the east side, inside the west side of two thirteen. So that'll give you an idea of the amount of improvements that, that have to be made. Those improvements get phased in. As, as residential density comes online and the sports park comes online, then there's different milestones that you need. You have to, you have to mitigate for the traffic. So that's a phased in portion of the, of the off-site. Um, we're also going to, the plan is for us to deed over the property, um, back at the Elk River, uh, for the, the regional park, as we described. So, so there's a value to that, as, as we've talked about. So, so Southfield developed in capital development's contribution, you know, to the town and, and infrastructure and real property is north of twenty million dollars. It's a significant investment that we made. Um, so I, th- this gives you an idea of what the costs are just on site, okay? So to, in order to put the, the water towers, I mentioned previously, it's about three and a half billion bucks, uh, with engineering, three point eight couple of dollars. Um, the Southfield Boulevard, the boulevard that connects all of the different strategic partners inside of Southfield. So the sideline sports complex to the retail, to the multi-family residential, to the single family detached, that main boulevard with the water and the sewer that's in there, um, as well as stormwater management, all of the paving, the curb, the gutter, the lighting, the landscaping. That's, and, and sewer pump station, that's twelve million dollars. Just to monetize this. So you, so everybody understands the amount of money. The cost to design this, the engineering cost is north of two million dollars. And as I've mentioned previously, the, the time delays due to the permitting and the approvals, because of the world that we're in and the interest rates, it costs us about two and a half million dollars on our bottom line for interest. Um, so the final update I want to give you and where we are and where we're gonna be this time next month is I think that we'll have all of our permits in hand. Um, I'm hopeful of that. I'm optimistic of that. Um, and I'm appreciative of, of the efforts here in, in the town recently. I want to make sure I say that. Um, we will have a groundbreaking ceremony. Uh, I'm hopeful it will be in November. So the weather hopefully will cooperate. I will, I haven't dropped this on mic yet, but I'm gonna ask the rent attendant Patriots' men. So we'll do a groundbreaking on site on the west side of two thirteen and then we'll proceed. And I would like to invite, you know, obviously all of the, uh, the political stakeholders that are involved and, and I'm gonna reach out to some county officials as well. I'll leave that up to, to you who want to invite, but I think that it should be a celebration for the town. Um, and I'm personally gonna invite the citizens. So, um, I think it's a good positive thing. I want everybody to understand where we are and where we're going. And, and I think the groundbreaking will be a good time to talk to everybody about that. Um, and then the last thing is just the finalize, finalizing the, 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 crossing the T on the developers agreement, the public works agreement. And I'm optimistic that that's gonna be happening in the next year or two. So I don't see any impediments now, um, to getting started here. So. So the, uh, thank you. Uh, I know that, uh, when I, when I see the water tower going up and it's actually pretty exciting, you know, it's, uh, it's up in the air. Now it needs to be painted. It needs to be tested. Uh, make sure none of the wells are leaking. Uh, there's a lot that they have to do with it. But going back to your comment, when, uh, we first talked about the water tower and we were going back and forth, back and forth. I think the, the capacity that was needed was either four or four and a quarter or four fifty for the Southfields development. And we really wanted it to be six hundred thousand. I think we had some initial, some, uh, initial discussions about maybe figuring out, uh, how we can make a little bit of the difference in the cost of that. And you didn't address that, uh, at all, but I know that, uh, I know what I had said and I know there was a couple of emails that went back and forth. So I just wanted to let you know that I haven't forgot that, that tank is bigger today for our use. Not so much all for Southfield, so. Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, but listen, we're loving the project. I, I was hoping that you were gonna say, let's go out there today and cut that ribbon because I, I think it's, uh, we're so close. We're so close. I saw that Lewis had the public works agreement over to your team. Yep. And, uh, I think we're real, real close to getting moving some dirt. And again, we're very appreciative. I, I would just ask Johnny if he's gonna award the contract for the dirt mover and that. He'll tell you when it's, we're close. We're weeks away. So we'll make sure we coordinate with everybody. Does anybody, I, I should have asked if anybody has any questions. I apologize.
Well, thanks for knowing, because we promised that you would, uh, keep us in vibes and hopefully that it's something we would kept to, uh, your measure. I just want to say thanks to, it's from everybody's, uh, view, uh, things are moving pretty good. And I, I really appreciate the, uh, being to see this project come to the town of Elton. Uh, some people may not look at the impact that it's gonna make on, uh, the town as far as income wise, but I see a different story, but, um, I'm not talking negative up here right now. Don't like the way it's moving right now, but I would like to move faster. Look at, you know, northeast and middle town, see how everything's growing so fast. And then we got a project like this, it just seems like it can't move fast enough. But anyway, thank you very much.
One thing I did neglect to say, and last time I was in here, I was doom and gloom about the world and the economy and blah, blah, blah. And I want to say this. I will say that, um, we have, we are starting the processing of, of designing and laying out the retail. And, you know, I would say that the excitement that's surrounding this project due primarily to what's going on with the sports complex and, and this, the, the complex moving forward, the demand for the retail has, has risen like this. So the residential guys were always on board. Uh, D R Horton's excited to be here. They've been here. They've said that to you. Race to our, our multi-family residential developers excited to be here. We were struggling a little on the retail side, you know, the, the, when I first met with, with Mayor Og, he's, he gave me some specific, um, wants or the type of retail that, that we would want to see here. And then it's been a struggle. Uh, but we're making great strides with the sports complex and that is driving a lot of the positive energy. I just, I neglected to mention that and I, I needed to, so. Um. Well, listen, I, I think that, uh, uh, we know that it was a work, live, play. We've got multiple buildings. It's gonna create a lot of job opportunities that is happening in the first parcels. We know that we are begging for new residential. Uh, we need new houses. We need new apartments. And, uh, we know the play part is gonna be huge for us. And, and if all three of those aren't working together simultaneously in light o'clock, then what happens is you don't get, town of Elton, if we don't have the, uh, 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 additional volume of traffic that we need from, I'm gonna say the sportsplex, we're not gonna get those nice restaurants that the residents pound us on all the time. Hey, Mayor, we're, we'll be happy with the Panera Bread. Well, we're going above Panera Bread. We're gonna be, Mayor, we're gonna be happy with the Longhorn Steakhouse. I want to be higher than that, right? And, uh, but, you know, we're, we're gonna get those. We're gonna get them. Uh, my understanding might be three, possibly three hotels out there in that area right now. And that's huge, not only for the town of Elton, but Chesapeake City's economy for their wedding, uh, uh, services that they offer down there. Uh, I, I, I think it's, uh, we are moving, but, you know, sometimes I, I always say that we, maybe we don't move fast enough, but as Earl says, but we are moving and, and that's a positive. It is positive. Positive, we're, we are, so. And, and the, uh, amount of, uh, you know, I want to say the, uh, improvements that are being made. Uh, one thing that we've always, uh, that I've known through my years of, of working with the state highway, they normally don't work on intersections until they're at F failure. And as bad as people think, two thirteen and Route forty and that, and that track of land going all the way to the Chesapeake City Bridge, it's not an F failure yet. These improvements that is gonna be made, is gonna actually make it better. The timing of the sports venues coming in and out, they're, they're at certain hours, at certain times and so forth. And I wanted to add one additional thing. You were talking about retail and I know, I know I'm rambling. But I physically spoke to two possible operators of a bowling alley that want to go into the sportsplex. And then it went into a conversation this morning with an individual that wants to even maybe do like a, I'm gonna say light A, Dave and Buster's, right? Uh, so those things are, are very exciting to hear because guess what, folks? You don't have to travel to Philadelphia or to Baltimore to, uh, have those, uh, nice amenities here. It's gonna be an uptick. It's pretty exciting. It is exciting. Any other questions for these guys?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have, uh, Republic Services Trash, uh, come on down. Gonna give us an update on where we're at with Mr. Dan Handling? How are you doing?
Feel good.
We're excited about November thirty. We're just hoping to hope about any, uh, pickups.
Yeah, this should be, um, everything's on point. So we spoke last month.
Dominic, I apologize for interrupting you. Are you going to do a presentation?
No, no, yeah, we're just gonna, um, kinda talk through it.
This tells me what I need to do over here.
Yeah, you're good. Everything, so we have, um, informational handlers coming next week. We'll deliver to all the residents. Um, they'll be deploying throughout the week. And as we spoke about last meeting, um, the containers will be arriving on the twenty-third. Um, that should take about five days. Then during that five day period, we're gonna assess, um, how many old containers are out there, uh, from various different companies. And we're gonna come up with a plan on how we're gonna get rid of them. So the town has them. As far as our internal work that we're, we're doing, everything's ready. We've got the gas ready. Um, we're just working with some final details on which communities are gonna be put on the particular days. Um, but I think we're almost, I'd say ninety-five percent.
Dominic, could I ask, I didn't interrupt, you had mentioned that getting rid of the older, other trash cans. Republic won't pick up another company's trash cans, really.
No, no, so uh, there's a couple ways that we can go through this, um. We're toy with the idea of bringing in a third party company, just to go around and collect. We're gonna see what that looks like. Um. And then we'll just look at what, what other options we have, but the answer is we'll pick up the public. So that's why we wanna, we wanna make sure that those containers.
See, a lot of citizens make, stick other cans out there and they're not gonna get picked up.
I understand, so we're, we're, we're gonna work through that, obviously. We're aware that there's a transitional period. Um, so. I think that's, there'll be, there'll be two sets of door hangers. The first set will come up on the sixteen, that just gives you the information that there will be transit, you know, switching. The twenty third, with the trash cans themselves, will be specific date, specific day, we'll go that that way. The twenty third, we don't have a can, that's everything that the residents will use the day, like the day, two days to pick up and holidays and all that, so that's. Those are the two, those are two types of information we're gonna have, so. The first one was the keep this general, if you're Tom, twenty third, here's your can, that's gonna be everything. And then um, on that piece that's in the cart, it'll be directed if they have further questions. You know, obviously go to this. And then we're just gonna stay close with Dan and Tracy and work through it. So I have two people waiting in the back here, George, who. Is uh, running the um, the division out of Wilmington, so. He basically works for Jeff who was here last, um, and then Andre was here as well. And Andre's gonna be really supervisor on, on the grounds. Um, making sure that everything goes the way that the contract says it should go.
So the, the one question or I guess one comment that uh, I'm sure you already got covered. Um. We know that we're picking up the waste management cans. Prior to or as we're doing and and we'll be working as a team here on that. The, the containers that are not waste management containers, which an individual purchased, are you gonna have? Conversation with them whether they want them out of there or are you just planning on taking, I, I don't think you should plan on. Taking someone's container that they paid for. So I think there has to be some type of discussion with them if they want you to take it. Uh, is my comment, right? Cause if you take them, I promise you they're gonna be in here, there's a police report file.
Yeah, just to be clear, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't take um, unlabeled containers, right?
Yes.
Well, we're not gonna take the containers, right? So we're looking at a, a third.
Firm, yeah.
Right, and so what we would direct them to is, hey, it looks like there's three or four or five different. Types of brand containers out here. What does it look like to get? Get them off, off the plank here?
Just a suggestion, maybe you might wanna get sticker says, uh, remove can and then if you want that, stick it on container and put it out there, that way. The owner would have their sale same paper. Um.
I, I see what you're saying.
Some kind of uh, yeah, uh, well, there is gonna be not, not a plot, a sticker that if, if I get it at my house, I've got a can. I just stick it on that can and then you know that the paper, and then wouldn't be no, no question asked about it.
Okay. Yeah, there's definitely gonna be some details to be worked out with that. The first step is to get the new containers on site. And let the team kind of assess exactly what they're gonna be dealing with because. You, it's not exactly clear how many containers are out, are out of town, so we, we gotta get eyes on that, go ahead and handle it better. So. Um. The other item was the, the trucks um, that were arriving this week. Um, we've got a brand new trucks um, ordered, but they won't, you know, they're in the pipeline, that's gonna take seven months. But that's it, and so I think we're three weeks away, so we're looking forward to it and um.
So, so, uh, uh, you give your spiel about this.
Yeah.
We, I think last time I mentioned to you that the homeowners, I'm sorry. We have a lot of level.
Yeah.
And that you contact the owners. Because it's more important for the owners to know about it as well.
Yes, actually, we're having a meeting at two o'clock today, we invited our landlords to go over the same details, if they're gonna go before.
Okay, I thought that was on the eleven, I guess, yeah, there is the eleven, you're right.
So we'll push that out to the next, you're right, that's gonna be key.
Right.
It's great that we're telling you, right, we need to push this out to the next.
And the other thing we're gonna stress with the homeowners and the renters, everything else, we got two containers. The most important thing is to save costs down the road. Start recycling. If you don't wanna recycle, rule of thumb, if it comes from Amazon, cut in a box, start recycling. You should be buying that, right? These are the kind of, these are the kind of information we're stressing the public, like. Recycling is easy, just at least if it comes from Amazon, it's nothing, it'll save the bulk space, it'll be easier to trash can all that kind of stuff, and that's. That's the kind of information we're stressing the public.
So there's gonna be an instructional thing about what can be recycled, is that?
Yeah, that, that will come back in exactly. That's gonna be, that's part of the, um, thing on the sixteen, yeah, that is. And what we do is we follow season down and so, when in doubt, you know, we, we do the same.
Like with the door hangers?
Yeah, the door hanger itself, we'll show them that they will shoot the cycle.
It does, yeah. It'll be on the door hanger.
What's this one?
Like, but we're second, stick it, shoot the cycle, let you, let you can put it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so just to go, pick the grab and that kind of thing, yeah. That's gonna be an ongoing, kind of. Okay, anyone?
Six eight months.
Morning.
Yeah.
We're, we're ready, exactly. We're ready to accept the challenge, so. We're, we're, the partnership is important.
Listen, you know what my goal is? I don't wanna see public works picking up any trash.
We don't, we don't wanna see that.
Okay, and as public works picks up trash, you know, we all know the consequences, so.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Again.
Yes.
All right, does anyone have any questions for?
Yes.
Dana and Republic?
Yes, sir.
Have we come to a decision on what we're going to do on Main Street?
Main Street, what we talked about on Main Street, like for the first, we'll, we'll talk to people on that at the two o'clock meeting. But at least, at least up to the North Street side, we have a lot of room in the back. We have, we have to park the cans, we're doing now. For the, for the portion from, I guess, North Street up towards the courthouse. I think initially we may start with the cans, we can put it, put a dumpster in there. We're still trying to work to that to fix.
So Dan had a, a good idea. Um. We're gonna implement the contract the way it was written. And then in the, after this ninety day period, we can really get a feel of what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. We'll make these changes and change on the next street, whatever efficiency or whatever. Never else do it though. We just wanna get out there and deliver it the way we said we would and then just see where we can. So he answered us by the end of February and then exactly where.
I, I, my comment would be this morning, uh. It was either this morning or yesterday morning, Waste Management went through and there was. Bags everywhere and they came over and picked up the bags. Now, my understanding is we're not gonna pick up the bags and ask you in a container. So I think now's the time that we need to really stress to the landlords today. That it has to be in a can and they're gonna say to you, well, Dan, I don't have, I can't put a can on the second story of. My building, what are you gonna do? So I'm just preparing.
Sure.
All the possible hiccups and we've talked about maybe putting a, a dumpster behind uh. The parking lot at, at the Minnehans Building. I mean, there's things that we could do.
Hundred percent.
But I do agree with you, let's go with the contract. But I think there's, if we allow them to put bags out now, they're gonna put bags the whole way.
Yeah, we, we, we definitely gotta get, the first step is to get everything off the street into the containers. And then we can get bigger containers, so much about it.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have Miss uh. Christina Brown, is she here? Hi. Come on up, Christina, introduce yourself. Hey Brad Corillo, is he still here? Hey, tell your gang to come in, I have something for you. Oh, I'm sorry Christina, but they're all leaving and I had, we had something for Brad. We had something for Brad Corillo. So, so Brad, I know that uh. Uh. I, I know that, I know that we were uh, gonna try to make this happen on the fourteenth, but. Uh, we wanna let you know that uh, the mayor commissioners of Brad and Jessica Corillo. Uh, behalf of the mayor commissioners, along with the citizens of the healthy community and recognition of their hard work and commitment to the highest standards. Of brewing craft beer, we formally extend our sincere congratulations to this extraordinary couple and celebrate. Elk River Brewing Company's five year anniversary, right? As we know, uh. Most companies, they used to tell me that if you can make it to the five year mark. It's tough, but you know you're gonna make it. Once you make it to year ten, you've made it, right? So and further congratulate you for consistently placing in one or more categories of Cecil County's favorites. Every year since two thousand eighteen. Furthermore, as mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton, we hereby proclaim October fourteenth, which is on Saturday. Elk River Brewing Day in Elton, given here our hand. Come on up, Brad.
We'll get you right here in front.
This is for you and and the team. Once again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brad.
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Maybe we'll see you Saturday.
Maybe see you Saturday.
Thank you.
I can read it again on Saturday, but I thought it'd be great to do it here since you were here.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Sorry, Christina?
No. Um, hi, I'm Christina Brown, I'm the new point of contact for Delmar Power. Hi.
There you go.
Um, hi, my name is Christina Brown and I'm the new point of contact for Delmar Power. Um, I just wanted to come out, introduce myself and give out my business thoughts. Give anything, they always reach out to me.
Listen, it's wonderful that you came in here because we do have something for you today. So we had a resident uh, last week, last month. Uh, request a possibility of getting a new street light. At a location and I have a map here for you that you can take back with you. And it's on Southland Court and one of our dilemmas that we have is that there's a, we have Danford Drive. In Elton. That comes to a cul-de-sac, but then there's a path. That the residents or or uh, yeah, I guess the residents of Danford Drive and or Tartan Drive have created a uh. A walkway, an unofficial walkway, but what happens is the residents around Southland Court. They get a little nervous that there's not enough lighting on that cul-de-sac. Uh, because people's cutting through all the time. So what we're asking is maybe you can take a look. To see if you can put a light at Southland Court and I got a, a beautiful map and a location maybe for you to take a look at. Now, see if it's feasible.
Okay, um, Southland Court?
It's called Southland Court. I don't think we did anything further with this.
No, we didn't, I just printed that out for the other.
Yeah, so it's for reference, this is for you.
Okay.
And you can take a look at it and uh, I'm not sure if it can be, I don't know where the, the wiring is, I don't know any of that.
Okay.
So.
Okay, Miss Christina, I'm gonna, what's the external business of it? What, what did you?
Maybe I shouldn't be giving this to you, I don't know.
No, no, I'm just.
So basically, uh, so I'm the point of contact uh, for Cecil, the Harper County, a portion of Harper County. Um, I have nine towns, Elk River is one of them. Um, so if you need anything in regards to. Anything for the electric company, Delmar Power, um, you can reach out to me, I can get you somebody for pretty much everything. And um, so I would, I'll reach out to them and see what it is that you need and get back with you.
So you're gonna move on with personal things with citizens more ID, maybe they don't know where it's here, um?
Yes.
So I probably, yeah.
Yeah. And so I, I'm also like um, the face for uh, Delmar Power, so if there, you guys are having an event or something. Uh, we can sponsor them, or we can create like partner and do a sponsorship or a contribution. Have the table set up, giveaways and.
Loving it. Thank you, we'll be happy to take your card.
Alright, thank you. I didn't, I didn't.
Well, I would say maybe the best place is to give Michelle your card.
Okay.
And she'll be the one, and I'll hand this paper to you so you can have reference of where we're looking at. Watch your step, Darren.
Are you, is there office, are you standing there?
Yes. Um, I think we're getting, I'm sorry, two cylinders, it's like my line is wide and big.
Are you, are you new there?
Am I new? Yes, I'm starting in Dubai, I'm not able to come yet, I think about thirty, but all the positions.
Who is, who?
I think we had Linda Burris for years.
Jeff Evans, he was there, not here many years, but more of a person. Um, Donald Snyder, um, Bill Matthews, Mike Brown.
Is there a Ronnie?
Yeah, Ronnie and Miss Stone.
Yeah, just there, yeah.
We want to hear. There's, there's, we want to hear more.
I'd love to have him. Thank you.
And I have more.
I was telling them they should get a card.
Oh, I have her contact, she, I have email.
Okay.
The whole line, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Guys.
Thank you.
Okay, it's not on the agenda, but I know that the council with uh, AF SCME would like to say a couple words, so I'm gonna give you the floor.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, uh, my name is David Marr, I'm an attorney at Conspith and Collins and I, my firm serves as labor counsel for Aspen. Uh, Council Three, uh, currently Council Seven and a number of other uh, unions, both private and public sector in the state of Maryland. Um, and for these purposes, uh, we do specialize and do a lot of work with. Uh, collective bargaining rights for public sector employees at state level and county level and at municipality level. So you do a lot of work, I do a lot of work in there, um, with regard to the legislation that needs to get done. Um, and how those rights uh, need to get established in municipal law or county law or state laws, if it's maybe. Um, so I'm just here to, one, offer myself to answer any questions you might have that's processed because. It's uh, it's a specific process, it's not overly complicated, but it does, you know, vary depending on what sort of uh. Who employs the employees. Um, and also because I understood that there was some uh, confusion or concern about recent legislation passed by the General Assembly this past year. Um, that that might uh. In some way interfere with collective bargaining rights.
That doesn't lie to us, it's only for state and school employees.
Exactly, that, that, that law only does not apply to any municipality, it does not apply to any counties. It applies solely to executive branch employees, community colleges and favorite public schools. Um, it doesn't have any interference with that. I was actually just yesterday down in Annapolis, the Senate Finance Committee had a. Uh, I guess a, not exactly a hearing, but a presentation on collective bargaining rights in the state of Maryland. Uh, because that is an issue that they legislate about frequently. Um, and they actually remarked, the committee counsel was an expert on these things and along with me helped write that recent law that passed. Uh, about the different uh, collective bargaining, different levels of government and one thing that everyone agrees on, it's very clear, the Senate Finance Committee agrees with as well. Is that for the home rule uh, governments, so municipalities and charter counties. That is entirely within the power of the municipality uh, to do. They, you know, they have to do it within their own uh, the charter first and then to. Extend those rights and make sure that they're there and there's a sound basis for it, but all that requires is that charter amendment and then uh. You uh, you convey a labor coach and speak that actually executes those elements of the charter. So it's a, it's a pretty straightforward process for municipalities and like certain other counties that should get some complicated.
What can you tell me, uh, uh, I received a handful of emails, of course. Yeah, I did. I saw uh, maybe twenty. And uh, the, the question, uh, and. As I, there was two distinct emails. But the one talked about the city of Salisbury. So Salisbury. Did, did they change their charter? Did they go out the vote with their residents?
So Salisbury did change their charter by, um, I believe they had a council, they had a city council, by a city council vote, they did not have a referendum. Which is not required.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for any municipality, you obviously have the two paths. So the uh, the. A vote by this commission under the local government law in Maryland would be sufficient to follow those paths.
Yeah, and I, I'd just like to comment, I think that there might be a little bit of uh. Uh, thinking that this group is not, we're not against it. We truly are not. We're being a little bit torn with whether we want to. Uh, do the charter change ourselves or allow the, the, I mean, there was a process. Uh, as the police officers went through where they had to go out and solicit. X amount of signatures and then they brought it back to the town board, which then gave them. Uh, permission to do a charter amendment and then it was voted on by the residents of the town of Elton. So that the, no one here is absolutely against it, but our dilemma is whether. Uh, we want to do the charter change ourselves or have the residents of the town of Elton. Make that decision for us in such a, a large decision. And um, I think that's where we're kind of at and some of the advice that we're getting is, hey, let's just put it on. Uh, the, the referendum. Now, we had multiple opportunities to, uh. Uh, for the public to come in and talk. We did the advertisement, we had. And, and which we knew that was going to be full of a room of people pro. Uh, the ones that were uh, against, I think that every one of us has been contacted that. They're not a hundred percent in favor of this and it's because they don't understand it, you know, they don't understand it. And uh, so that would have to take more work on the employee's side to, to help sell the message to. The residents, but I think that that's kind of where we're at. Am I missing something or is that about where we're at? We're, we're at the.
Well, I think we're on the bridge that. We don't think that we're willing to say, let's not make them go out there. And get all those signatures. We're more than willing to put this from the ballot.
Well, my only question and suggestion has been, can we not do a special election and not have to wait until May? It is very costly.
Your municipal election usually costs about five to six thousand dollars for one.
And there's no other easier way of doing this.
Well, um, you do want to advertise to me, um, as if it were an election and I'm not giving you any advice, that's, I certainly can't do that. But I would suggest to you that if in fact, it does go to, say, the May fourteenth, any changes, you know. Um, uh, the budget, they wouldn't be going into effect until June first anyway. So with all due respect to everybody involved. I don't know that it's an emergency situation, so much so if the board decides to go to a referendum. You've already got an election scheduled for May fourteenth.
Right, but they're going to follow the budget.
Correct, and if the voters of the town decide that this is what, the way they want to go, again, if it's going to change the budget. You're already in the process of creating a budget that won't start until January first of that year anymore. July first, I think.
If I may just make two points.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I always hesitate to speak on behalf of employees. I believe very much in employees' self determination. They wanted to be here their lunch break.
Understanding, understanding.
Sorry, the, the, they wanted to come and speak unfortunately because you weren't able to, uh, uh. You had other priorities.
Yeah.
At this meeting. Their lunch break had ended, so they were prepared.
I know. Why don't they, why don't they ask people to remember this when they had one scheduled one? Rather than show up here at four o'clock and then just have to walk out. I mean, that's a shame.
They would still have, uh, the lunch hour, the lunch half hour.
Yes, they work, uh, they have to work and that's their time.
Well, listen, the agenda for today was already.
I know that. I'm just saying, if you keep shutout meetings and they're walking out. And they're nothing being accomplished for them. You know, I'll just.
I think they would be very grateful to be, you know, if, if you're up to management with your agenda. Obviously, I can't tell you.
Sure, what, what is, what is their purpose? For coming into the meeting, but we've already told them that we support them. But we have an election that some of us, if not all of us, want to go.
Sorry, I don't.
Yeah, what?
I think.
We understand.
I think, and I would, you know, obviously they wanted to come and say this themselves, uh. But their, their position is they have a desire to, they have organized themselves. They believe they. Have collective bargaining rights and should have it and they would like, uh, they'd be commissioners to. Uh, vote to amend the charter of the town to permit them to pursue that path or figure that path. Rather than we, and one thing I will say is that, you know, obviously I don't have to prove this, but. Uh, the, the commissioners acting to change the uh, the town charter. That does not deprive the voters of their choice either in lunch or if there is significant opposition, they can pursue a referendum to overturn. Uh, the, the commissioners to change.
You know, we, we've talked with them and we've been accommodating in meetings, but. The more I listen to you and in their absence, it seemed like they're a little warm. And personally myself, I'm going to continue to support them, but. What you have to say and, and. I certainly hear and what they have to say, we don't hear, but then you're talking on one hand and they're supposedly talking to you on the other end. In the meantime, we're not hearing that at all. So you see where I'm going? I mean, we're sitting up here and I'm not going to say them, but I feel like a puppet sometimes, sitting here while we're trying to make accommodations. That's good for the town and good for them. So, you know, you leave there, I don't know what your next step is and I don't know what their next step is. But it's been said today that they can be put on the bus, you can make them go on their first. And I would also think even if they were here, would they still be entitled to a half hour lunch? I don't know. Even if they weren't. Or would they?
My understanding is that they only have a half hour for lunch and this.
But is that, but I'm saying is that lunch a precise time or are they still doing their hours of work and doing the day? They get that one and a half hours.
It's, it's a precise thing because it's under our pay core system. That's the allocation of their free time, that, that half hour, otherwise their own company time. So that's how, that's how we're set up to operate in this government.
Well, well, listen, uh. I, I guess. The employees are being hung out there a little bit. They want to know which direction we're going to go. And I would say that, uh, I know it wouldn't be unanimous, but I, I listen, I could call for a vote right now. And I promise you that it's gonna, it won't, we won't even get a motion to support. Uh, uh. Making the charter change. You know, I, I need to, my position is, is I. Try to know where our whole board is sitting as a team. And I don't want to put them under a position where it's uh. Called specifically out, but I would also say this, everyone on this board supports. Uh, putting it on the referendum, one hundred percent. Hundred percent, I think we will all agree to that, right? Putting it on referendum. I think everyone is, and, and that's the vote that I know that I can pass.
I, I just don't know why, yeah, we're being subjected.
So.
Maybe, maybe to be voted. Do we have to vote? I don't know.
You have counsel. Uh, to advise the board and councils online. I wouldn't remark upon the charter amendment until you speak with counsel.
So are we meeting in a closed meeting about this?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Confidential thing.
Okay. Alright, very good. So we are going to have a, a meeting today with counsel. Here very shortly, but I can tell you as of right now, I think the position is, is to uh, do it as a charter.
It's not my job to tell you. Understand political things. Now, I, I understand, uh, you know, when employees request recognition from their. Uh, their bosses, their managers, their employers. It is always within, uh, the managers and employers' power to voluntarily recognize them and is effectively what the employees must count for that, so.
Yeah, we appreciate you, Anne. We really do.
And if you have any questions about the legal processes or anything like this, uh, please, uh, I actually do have a, a business card to give out if you want one. But feel free to reach out to me. I will do my best to answer the questions, but.
Thank you. You could actually give the court to John Downs. Thank you guys. Okay, this was our workshop. Uh, I think we're going to close our workshop and uh. Does anyone, uh, I think, I think they're on here for our closing. Okay. Okay, very good. So, uh, do I have a motion to do a closed meeting, uh, pursuant to state government statutory chartering section? We do? In a second?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, we reconvene.
We will not reconvene. From the closed meeting unless you need to.
Uh, there's just a couple things I want to touch base on real quick, but.
Well, let's uh, listen, let's do this. This is, we're gonna, I got a motion and a second, but during your discussion, tell me what you got.
Um, real quickly, I wanted to talk about the planning commission meeting we had for their, of the start construction on the second phase. Out of Commerce Center. And the residents had a concern about, uh, a lot of things, dust, lighting, noise, but they're all working it out. Everybody's happy. But it came down to the discussion, it might be seen when the emails flow back and forth between Lisa and Chip. About the start time for construction.
I don't believe I was privy to that.
It was, I just got the emails, um, but there was discussion. Um, according to Chip, the universally accepted start time for, for this type of construction is seven AM. Um, even though the situation might be a little different this time, they might not be pouring concrete, they're going to have trucks at four AM. There was a consensus from the planning convention that they wouldn't like this. Handle, um, it's not in our ordinance and there's no, there's nothing written. We have to amend. Uh, our noise, we're also some great, we'll accommodate this. So I think it's on that, maybe we can have further discussions or check that out.
Yeah, I think so. I'm, I'm looking at it now. Uh, his complaint was primarily regarding the four AM start time.
Yeah, so I mean, it's probably important involved, but it's also really, everybody wants to work together. Um, to, to get it, you know, fit. But right now, there's nothing on the book that gives.
One of the things we have to consider, the contractors don't work for us. They'll work for Southfields or Southern Pro or whatever LLC.
Right.
So we would have to have that LLC, uh, put that provision on a contract. Rather than us saying you can't do it because it, we can say that, but um, that contractor will have subs that show up at four o'clock in the morning. Who knows anything about this law.
It was in the woods, whether it's for this particular phase or future phases.
Okay, but what time do you want to start? That's what I mean behind. Seven o'clock? But what, we'll have to make sure that Southfields or Continental Pro puts that in their contract.
Craftburn, is that his name?
Yes.
Tom Wright, I don't know if he's doing that.
Was born June and he was extremely cooperative about all, all those issues that they thought of. And he's well aware of this particular one and. I was kind of hoping that we could also, you know, make sure that he's on board with this.
With those family groups.
They still research it. They don't have, yeah, and here's the issue, is the town of Elton construction affecting county residents? Oh, our ordinance says specifically any noise that affects Elton. We would have to tweak this amendment. For either now or future involvement. So that's the issue I wanted to bring up more. About how we could best approach this. We have a noise ordinance that not.
I'm not sure how, uh, John will get in on this, because I wouldn't be sure how we could enforce an ordinance. Uh, for someone's not in the town, I mean. We could just have, we could just put it in a contract. That's what I mean. It could be part of a contract.
So Luke, could you put the public works agreement to start time?
We don't have a public works agreement, uh, for buildings. We only have for Commerce Drive. So I don't know if it'll be related to Commerce Drive or the construction of the building. Once that eight hundred thousand or million, that's on private property. It's not under our contract.
Well, this, like I said, Mr. Raffburnt seemed very, um, open minded. About this and, um, out of respect, yes, I think we should also.
So if we enforce our own code that starts at seven AM.
We have to create this.
Oh, we don't have a code? I think we do have a noise. We do have.
Have a noise.
Mayor, uh, I'm on the call. I, I wasn't sure if this was going to come up, so. This is Lisa Blackson. Um, so when I was looking at the code right now, we only have it addressing residential noise and essentially within residential areas. I think one way, um, that we could address this would be. To modify it, we don't necessarily need to set in what commercial, you know, noise ordinances would be, but maybe just set in a provision associated with. When commercial abuts residential. Whether or not there should be similar time constraints that there are, like we have for residential. Um, because there's times set in essentially quiet hours. Um, that are in the current ordinance for residential to residential, um, and it does. Um, incorporate things such as construction. Uh, presumably for like when you're building a neighborhood or whatnot. Um, but when you're talking about the primary issue that was brought up at the planning commission was that there is. Noise from a commercial area that doesn't, isn't necessarily regulated by. The noise ordinance that we have that is affecting residential areas.
Yeah, I probably, yeah, I, I think, I think we would all be okay with that. I don't see any, any reason why we couldn't. Tweak it if we have to tweak it and uh. Uh, we just have to see what time's a reasonable time. I know that the trash companies. Uh, sometimes they, they come at four or five AM depending on the heat during those times. Uh, and, and we get complaints on them. So I would say that new construction, we could easily do it at, at seven o'clock.
I mean, that was children's motivation.
I think seven would be, I think, I think we could make that tweak.
And I think that's consistent with John Connolly was the individual who had mentioned it and I think his suggestion also was seven AM. So I think that would be. At least a, a universally agreed upon time that. Is reasonable. I think, like you indicated previously, the biggest issue in the. Fire construction was the four o'clock, um, start times and it was, wasn't necessarily the making of the concrete, it was the trucks going back and forth and the. Um, the chutes bouncing up and down on the, uh, ground that was making most of the noise.
Yeah, the good news now is there's a, a roadway. Uh, that's in there that would, would take a lot of the traffic, uh. Different, different method, but yeah, I think, I think it's good.
Just apply to any construction anywhere.
No, I think, I don't see, I don't see any reason, you guys. Seven o'clock's good.
I, I was thinking about the time, I was thinking about how you enforce it.
I think that's the challenge is going to be, because we're not even in at seven AM, so if, uh, if they make.
Well, it's not a misdemeanor, so. Probably just being infractious, so I'm not sure I. Grab a truck driver, you know, bringing in a Peterbilt with a load of concrete, what you do with it? I mean, I don't know.
And we're not until eight o'clock, so the noise will be.
Thank you for letting me.
Alright.
Thank you Lisa.
Thank you Lisa.
I realize you were on the war here.
No problem.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jean?
Uh, the only other thing I have since we're getting towards the end of the year is, are we going to be doing, uh, a year of town bulletin? Because they're about to be public or not? Um, I saw David have to be working on that, so we bring you to one to you.
I'll call Jamie and ask for, I'll get you an update.
Thank you. So we had a motion and a second in regards to the closed meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we will not reconvene.